And then to start the hearing, as we do have some people in the audience.
Yeah, I apologize to those out there. This is what makes the zoning board fun. Okay. Well, at any rate, I'm going to open the hearing. We have a a full complement of members. It's Woody Chidick sitting here. It's David McMorris's vice chair, Charlie Higginson, or the regular member, then Lee Daris, Matt Watkins, and Mike Dickey. It's now about seven nine oh nine on Tuesday, December 7. This is a virtual Zoom meeting. And I'm calling the zoning board to order.
Could trouble you for a roll call?
Please, sure. Woody Chidick, aye.
Abe McMorris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Lee Daris, aye.
Charlie, you're muted.
I can't unmute.
But no, well, you just did for a second.
There you go.
Now I'm unmuted.
There you go. Yes.
You're set. Okay. Okay. All right, now, we'll be very quick. The next meeting dates as proposed to the Z of the ZBA are January 4th and February 1st. Consistent with our practice of meeting on the first Tuesday of a month. Does anybody know of any definite knockout issues that will prevent them from attending either the January or February at this point? And these are presumably Jan B Zoom meetings until we hear otherwise.
Correct. And I I just want, David, did you, are you not available for one?
I I'm traveling on February 1st.
Um, so I scheduled out for the year, and so we'll still do what we do. It just it just gives everybody a timeframe. And more importantly, it gives applicants a submission deadline. I will, I will tell you that this evening, a few of our cases are going to be continued, you know, as long as you all agree, making January a decent meeting, not a crazy meeting. But we do have one new meeting, one new application for a doc. But I just got an email from the Mariner that they're actually not printing on the two dates that would I would advertise for for that for that hearing. So I may hold it off. You know.
Dave, I would suggest that you give us an alternative day or two, because I think with what Jen is saying, it's very likely that any hearing you're you're sitting in on tonight or in January is going to continue to February. I think we're going to need you.
So we can do that. And I think you might close a bunch. I think you're going to do a sign. Yeah, I think you're right.
Right, right. Yes, yes, we have North Go acid and whatever.
Yeah, right. So that's just food for thought. And if I decide to go forward, I'll just do the advertisement for the new hearing and the and the merit and the Patriot ledger. So that everything stays on track, but it's just sort of a weird scenario.
I've certainly got got flexibility. And I think if we had an alternative date or two, maybe a preferred in a in a backup, everybody in the board could individually offline, Jen.
Yeah, they could let me know. So I'll, great. So we'll just, we'll definitely keep January 4th, and then we'll we'll double check on the February date. Okay, perfect.
Okay, well, I'd like to open the first continued hearing, which is 237 Hall Street. It's the conversion of a single family home into a kind of a two unit dwelling plus 100 square foot home office.
Woody.
Abe.
Does I have a quick administrative Zoom?
Oh, sorry.
If you are muted and you want to talk, you can just push and hold the space bar down, and it will unmute you.
Okay.
That's fancy.
Oh, when did you learn that? Geez, smart guy. Okay. Well, anyway, let's get back to 237. Jeff Hassett, are you here speaking on behalf of the applicant Chris Ford?
I am. Thank you.
Jeff, you have sharing capabilities, just so you know, and gonna pop up.
Okay, I'll bring up the site plan then. There it is. All right, shall I dive right into it?
Please.
All right, great. So for the record, Jeff Hassett here, civil engineer with Morse Engineering. I believe the property owner, Chris Ford, is on the call as well. And this is a continued public hearing for a special permit for a property at 237 Hall Street. It was originally presented by Greg Morse for my office, but he had another commitment this evening. And to give you a recap of the project, the building on the property now is currently a mixed use building. It has office space as well as a three bedroom apartment. And the proposed renovations are to convert it into two apartments, one being a one bedroom and one being a two bedroom. So that it's the same number of total bedrooms, three bedrooms, and then a smaller office area. So it works out to a reduction in the required number of parking spaces, because it's the same number of bedrooms, but less office space. Following the last meeting, we submitted a revised site plan dated November 16th. And the revisions that we made are that were specifying the size of the parking spaces. They're all nine and a half by 20. Okay. We're adding dimensional setbacks to the property lines from well, from the parking spaces to the property lines, and they're all a minimum of five feet off of the property lines. We've added a parking table. And we removed parking space five, which was adjacent to the garage. In addition to the planner visions, the butter to the south submitted a letter in support of the project. And we feel at this point, we have addressed all the comments from the last hearing in that this this project will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I've got just one. You've got a note there with an arrow pointing to the existing porch. And it said roof pitch alteration. Is that an alter? What is the alteration? And is it an alteration that we have or have not seen before?
You you have seen that before. It's shown on the architectural plans dated July 8.
Oh, okay, okay. I didn't know if that was a note indicating a brand new alteration.
No, it's it's a it was proposed as part of the original application.
Okay. It's not a height issue there, tall.
No, they're not going taller than the existing building. It's essentially adding a dormer.
Yeah. Board, what kind of questions have you?
Yeah, I know previously, right, we had a discussion on the one and a half spaces. I had gone back and kind of reread that. I don't know. I was looking back through my notes. I forget if we had kind of asked Caroline for any guidance on that, but I do see the new plan reflects, you know, the the one.
I I I believe our conversation, I mean, not that I don't want to hear from Caroline, Carolyn, but said that that called out in that seven, whatever it is, one A or whatever was one and a half specifically. It didn't deal with the rounding up.
Right.
I I think if they'd wanted to round up, it would have indicated for each unit, you would round up, but but they wouldn't have started off with one and a half.
Yeah.
So I I think the consensus was it was meant to be one and a half and additive. So two, two units equals three spaces. And then we go to the home office, the office. Yeah, I mean, I I kind of had a sense that we that's where we came out without making a group vote of it.
Okay, yeah, no, that that looked right.
But if people just agree with that interpretation and think there should be more parking spaces, it's a little late, but it's never too late.
Yeah, no, I I think that looked right. I was just kind of verifying a sanity check on that, but I I think
It 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 could have been more artfully kind of stated, I think, or we're taking some of the ambiguity out, but be that as it may.
See, I don't have any other questions.
I missed I missed it, Chairman, if my, if it matters at all, I agree with that. That the one and a half spaces per unit. So for the two units, three parking spaces would be required.
Yeah, thanks, Karen.
Um, who I don't have a copy of the letter in support. Who is the neighbor that wrote a letter in support?
We got that after I sent the packets. It's from it's from the corner stop owner. So I'll make sure you have it or put a notation to make sure you get it.
Okay.
Was there any concern raised, or was just endorsement?
Just just they are approve of the project. They are in favor of it.
Okay, well, I think this is been a I know it's been stretched out, but it's been a productive hearing. And I think what we're dealing with here are some almost de minimis sort of issues, so. I would sorry, Dave.
I just are spaces three and four tandem spaces?
They are, yes. Oh, you mean, how do you access three if 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 there's a car on four?
They're tandem.
Yeah, they are tandem. That's how they currently park at the property. You know, it's not making that any worse, and it's reducing the required number of parking spaces. So there'll have to be coordination between the tenant in the one, the tenant in the one bedroom apartment with the small office, the 100 square foot office, which is the property owner. It's his real estate office. And there's also free parking as well.
Just not overnight.
Right.
Other questions in the part of the board? If not, I would make a motion that we close the hearing.
What are you actually going to continue it to January?
Continue, all right, same. Oh, God, okay. You're absolutely right. Continue. We will have a draft decision available at that time.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, Woody Chidick, aye?
Charlie, it's an aye.
Abe McMorris, aye.
Lee Daris, aye.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, so it's been approved unanimously to continue the hearing until January 4th. Okay, our next hearing will be a quickie, I gather. It's 508 Chief Justice Cushing Highway to allow the use of a second hydraulic lift in in the smaller structure in the property. Jen, you want to post us and where that stands?
Certainly. So the applicant had requested to continue it because they are putting together their requested as built so they could so they could look at those and then make give those to the water department. The water department engineer also reached out and said that they can't give any of the requested conditions the board asked for without those. So it's kind of a chicken and the egg thing. We need those so that you can get those conditions. But in addition, John Howland asked that I update the board that we will be drafting a letter tomorrow asking to request the the removal of the the Winnebago off that site as well. So so the keep the hearing to continue it until we get all we need. It makes the most sense. So we did get that we get to get that in writing from Attorney Henderson, but also prior to that, Jason Frederico had requested it be continued because of lack of information.
Okay. Does anybody in the board have a a challenge or contrary point of view? Otherwise, I'm I would propose that we accept the applicant's request to continue the hearing until January 4th. But first.
Yeah, Woody, I think the only other thing, and I don't have a strong opinion on it, but I did. I did see in the letter that was written from Jason. You know, I think he asked that it be continued because the information hasn't been provided, but also that the board requests that the applicant cease cease the use of the storage build for anything other than what was approved by us previously. Again, I know that condition's been operating like that for a while, but that would be, I think, the only consideration, other than just kind of saying, hey, we'll continue it. Does any, you know, do we have an issue with the way that it's operating currently? Because it's not being operated as we approved. So do we want to consider having it operate the way it was approved until we choose to potentially amend that?
So I would recommend I would recommend that be part of John's letter where he's the enforcement agent on this existing special permit. So he if he drafted a letter regarding the removal of the of the Winnebago that's sitting without a permit, he would also ask them to cease operation of something that isn't currently permitted by the existing special permit. I think, and to to Matt's point, it was brought up from Jason in that same email.
Yeah, to me, it makes very excellent sense that if they're operating outside of the decision we made a year and a half ago or whatever. They they really certainly while it's before us for consideration, I think they've got to stop stop that use as well as remove the Winnebago. Which again was a temporary construction oriented addition. It's overstated. It's welcome.
Right. And then once they remove that, they can then put the berm in, which is another requirement of the water department, which, you know, satisfy that request as well. But I'll make note to ask John about that.
Okay.
What's a typical timeline, Jen? I'm like, a request for a removal, do we do we know?
So we would draft a letter and give him a timeline. And once I have that, I will see see the board on it so that you know what what usually it's it's effective immediately, or, you know, reasonable amount of time, then he they will call him and they'd work on a date. But the notice itself would would inform them that they have to remove it. Now, they could not remove it and appeal it. But I know that they were working on it verbally anyway.
Yeah, that's what I recalled from the last meeting, is that this seemed to be a surprise that it wasn't removed before our last meeting. But.
Yes.
So let's the Jen, I would suggest, I don't know, that we deferred John Howland, but request that the removal, et cetera, be done you know, with all due haste, you know, within seven to 10 days, working days, whatever he thinks is reasonable. Rather than just leave it open ended.
I'm going to I'll email him after this meeting, so he has it first thing.
Okay. Anybody else, any other conditions or issues that we want to sort of have John address in the interim? If not, I'd like to make a motion to continue the hearing at the applicant's or yeah, everybody's required the applicant's request to January 4th. So that's a motion made. Second.
Second. Charlie Higginson, second.
Okay, Woody Chidick, aye.
Lee Daris.
Michael Dickey, aye.
Hey. Okay. All right, I would like to leapfrog one, although Jen, I don't know about the timing. Maybe we can't in terms of nine diab lane, but I understand that the applicant there is also requested a continuance.
They have, I would wait until the posted time of the agenda, because I know we have one person in the audience for the other meeting, the other hearing is open, and so we can start it earlier, and that's the one we.
Yeah, I just wondered about that. Okay. So let's let's open, let's go to the continued hearing on 15 Dolan Lane. Request by for a special permit to replace an existing structure with a single family residence. So that's been continued since last month. I assume that the applicant is in the audience. And Clark Brewer is
Yep, there he is.
Representing himself. So Clark, if you would explain to the board, there was a really hefty packet submitted in the interim period. So Clark, tell us again what you're looking for, why you think you are eligible for the relief you're requesting.
Clark Brewer. It's it's good to see you all on the board. So this is a request for a special permit for front setback relief for a proposed structure that replaces existing structures. The 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 site itself has been cleared and in use for over 100 years with a variety of structures and and uses. And I'm planning to replace those existing structures with a with a residential structure. I did at the last hearing. Woody, you asked me to provide the backup information for the case that what's proposed is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is existing. And I was also asked to provide area diagrams. I think that was either David or Matt, which I have done. And I also put together a summary that I think covers covers all the points that were raised. And I'm happy to go through that and see if there's any questions.
Board. Let me suggest, Clark, then, I mean, I really would like to hear from the board that you are requesting relief on on a on an issue of structural nonconformity, nonconformities, but there's a bigger relief issue, which which you do address, which has to do with the change of use. I mean, the the intensification of nonconformity is pales in significance to the issue of change in use. Why don't you tell us your reasoning behind thinking that this change of use is not substantially different from the existing use?
Well, I did. I did some research and found in the on on page two, I cover that on the first item, the proposed use is not substantially different from the existing use. The existing use buildings and structures are not substantially different from the proposed single family residence and are are all uses allowed as a right in the zoning bylaw table of regulations as single family accessory building, boathouse, shed, detached garage, and are all allowed uses for residents be. But the the key element, I think, for for this is under the definition section in the zoning bylaw 2.1, which defines substantially different use as any use that is not permitted either by right or by special permit by the zoning board of appeals within the district in which the lot is located, so that since the existing use structures and the proposed use are all allowed uses. This definition I believe is the the main reinforcement for my proposal.
Okay, I think what doesn't, I I would agree that the proposed use is permitted in this district or in just about everywhere in town. But what's not covered with that change in use is any zoning protections from a dimensional standpoint, any new structure has to comply fully with the current bylaws. You can't have, you can't be creating a new nonconformity by building a house within the setback.
Well, I mean, there a proposed house as well as the existing buildings and structures, they're all they're all buildings as defined by the zoning bylaw, which is under that definition, any structure or portion thereof, either temporary or permanent, having a roof or other covering forming structure, including tents and vehicles for the shelter of persons, animals, or property of any kind. And that that doesn't differentiate a house with people living in it from a barn with animals in it or a boathouse with a with a boat being.
Well, I kind of think chapter section six of 40A does talk about you know, what is covered and, you know, what is, I can't use the word grandfather, what is protected versus whatnot. And this is not what's there now is clearly not a residential dwelling, which is which is protected under the second accept clause. This is a nonconforming structure. But it doesn't. But if you replace it, it loses any any grand, any protect historic protections, and you have to or not you, the new structure, I believe, has to comply with according to state law, it has to comply with current bylaws. Fully, unless you want to go for a variance. Now. I mean, argue against.
Well, you know, I'm not creating a, I mean, the the lot itself exceeds the zoning requirements by 27%. The structures are all legally nonconforming.
Wait, wait, when you when you say legal, what's what's legally nonconforming? Your proposed house?
All the all the structures that are existing are legally nonconforming.
Okay.
We have a definition that 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 says that that says, according to the zoning bylaw, the existing uses are not substantially different from what are proposed.
That's the issue.
We can. It's it's right there in our zoning bylaw.
Yeah, we could. We could argue that point, but what it doesn't say, what the bylaws appears to be silent on, is whether you can create more nonconformities or a new nonconforming structure. It simply says your use, what's there. Yes, you could expand those, or at least come to us for a substantially not more detrimental to the neighborhood finding for for the barn if you wanted to. But I don't think you you couldn't do it with the old, whatever they have that that other structure is because it's been abandoned, but but leave that issue aside.
What's been abandoned?
Barn.
The barn. Well, whatever, whatever that structure is where all you have is a foundation, existing barn foundation that's been abandoned. It's lost any right to be reconstructed.
Well, it's it's still, I mean, it's still an existing foundation. So it's by our bylaw, it's a structure.
You're you're allowed to maintain it.
But I think that's I think that's a minor issue. If you're if you're saying that that mass general law 40A, section six in your interpretation doesn't apply to existing nonconforming structures. Where I mean, you could take a if 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 I had a a I have an existing garage, I suppose you could use the logic that I'm going to add a house to an existing two car garage.
No, but then you'd be substantially changing the use.
But not according to our bylaw. It's not.
I would, I would personally disagree, I think.
I don't, I don't see anything in under chapter 40A, section six, that that makes the differentiation between one use and another in terms of whether it's a garage or a house or or any other legally nonconforming structure.
Well, the first except clause, what what does the first except clause say under under that paragraph? Well, the first except clause, what what is the first except clause say under under that paragraph? You you would agree that the barn that's there now or whatever, what the hell are we calling it? With the garage that's there now is 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 not a dwelling, right? You would agree with that. We can start there.
It it's not a dwelling.
Right, okay, let's start right there. Okay, so the second except clause doesn't apply to. Anything other than a single or two family residential structure, so you have to go to the first except clause. That does deal with substantial expansion, structural changes, blah, blah, blah.
So you. Well, there, I mean, there is some language about it and I haven't looked at this carefully because I I believe that our zoning bylaw covered the. The difference between the the garage use and the single family use, but it it does say. An extension of use to a building, a special permit issued after the first notice said public hearing and to any construction reconstruction, extension or structural change to such structure. And to any alteration of a structure begun after the first notice, the public hearing to provide. For its use for a substantially different purpose or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner. So there. Or to a substantially greater extent, except where alteration, reconstruction, extension, and structural change to a single or two family. Does not increase the nonconforming nature. The nonconforming nature of the said structure. It's it's not substantially. It's not more nonconforming where I'm moving the structures, the proposed future structures. Substantially away from the property line than they currently exist.
But but they're nonconforming and more nonconforming than what exists today, both from a footprint and from a volumetric standpoint. They're intensifying a non an existing nonconformity, right?
Well, well, I think we're we've heard earlier that intensifying an existing nonconformity is. Is is okay with the.
It's not necessarily okay. The board has to find make a finding.
That it's not a by right. That it's not substantially more detrimental and I and I can't see. How a single family house would be more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's existing there.
Well, let's say you have a a footprint, an existing footprint that's 200 and some odd square feet. In in the setback and you're now going to 900 or 1000 square feet in the setback. That's that's a significant intensification in my mind.
Certainly, but I have reduced the the area in the setback by 244 square feet.
I don't think so. I don't see the, I don't see the math that way. You can't count the the an abandoned foundation.
It still counts as a structure, Woody.
Count as a structure, but it's it's. You've got a significant change here, I think.
Again, it's not a substantially different use and certainly.
Is not a substantially different use from a house. I think they're probably.
According to the definition in the bylaw, it's not a substantially different use.
There's no definition in the bylaw that. It's the board's decision whether it's substantially different use or not.
Well, I'm just saying, there's a definition in the bylaw that that I think covers the situation adequately. And gives the board. Something to depend on.
Now, what I mean, I have a point of view here. And I remain unconvinced, but I'd like to hear from my colleagues. Somebody want to speak?
I'm happy to to go through my my three pager if if you're interested. In in that and go through the the 12 points why I believe.
I don't think our bylaw necessarily trumps, I don't think our bylaw trumps chapter forty A. I think I think the bylaw speaks to. You know, allowed uses this sort of thing, but it doesn't give a. An exemption from meeting bylaw requirements such as dimensions. Those, this is a new structure. That has to conform to current bylaws. There there's no grandfathering of the of some former. Setback or anything else.
We we call it existing nonconforming now, but it's. You know, it. The first paragraph. Does cover. Having a public hearing for a substantially different purpose or for the same purpose in a substantially different manner. So I think that under. Forty A, section six, the first paragraph, I think there is some some leeway for the zoning board of appeals to make a. A special permit finding of not substantially more detrimental.
I think it'd be a variance finding. You're not taking an existing structure and expanding it. Or altering it, you're putting a, you're removing an existing structure and in a somewhat different location regardless. You're you're putting a very different structure and a very different use on this piece of land.
Yes, but under the reconstruction definition in the zoning bylaw, an alteration. Is any construction or reconstruction or other action resulting in a change of the structural parts or height?
Yeah.
So an alteration of existing.
That doesn't say you don't have to comply with zoning, it just simply says here's what.
It can be a reconstruction, which would be full on replacement, which is what's proposed. I mean, if it, let's just say it was a a single family house that was there. And it was in as poor condition as my garages are, then. Then it would be a re reconstruction. In the in a different footprint presumably with. As a teardown.
Yeah.
It would still be a reconstruction that's that's allowed is what's called an alteration under the definition section of the zoning bylaw.
But the alterate, alright, the alteration doesn't say that you get a waiver on. Dimensional requirements, there's the zoning bylaw, it simply says. You can apply for a. I guess a variance, you could probably apply for a special permit if it's not substantially different.
I am, I am applying for a special permit.
Yeah, but I think I think in fact that's the proposed use is substantially different. Anyway, I'd like to hear from other board members. I I don't want to sort of make this a. You know, he said, she said sort of thing. Does anybody in the board wish to sort of jump in? Be bold.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to run through my my major major point summary and then the the the.
Okay. Why don't you be, you know, do it swiftly and and then I'll turn it over.
I'll go through this quickly. It's the last page of of my supplemental documentation. If the the special permit major point summary is one, the existing structures are buildings and conform to the zoning bylaw definition of building. The existing and proposed uses are as of right and not substantially different from each other. Three, the existing structures are legally nonconforming buildings consistent with mass general law forty A, section seven. Four, all the existing structures, buildings can be considered relative to the proposed building. Five, the proposed front setback is less nonconforming than over half or 57% of neighboring houses. Number six, the proposed front setback is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And then I go through. Your determination for a special permit determination can be made under zoning bylaw seven point eight point seven B and. Mass General Law forty A, section six. The board need only determine it if the proposed project front setback is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and is not injurious. Or dangerous to the public under eight point seven B. Supporting points are. One, the project has been reviewed with neighbors for comment, see emails submit submitted previously. Two, the project has a relatively small. Residential gross floor area of 2700 compared to other new co-asset houses. Three, there are seven existing houses within 500 feet of the proposed project. Four or 57% have a front setback less than the proposed 15 feet. Four, the average density within 500 feet is three acres per house. The town's average, or this will bring it to three acres per house, the town's average is 2.2 acres per house. The proposed project is over 350 feet from adjacent neighbors and is not visible for almost eight months of the year. And can't be seen from North Main Street at any time of year. I've designed the project to. To have good solar orientation so that it can be designed with sustainable design standards and a planned. Solar ready roof. Seven, the traditional exterior design and and planned high quality exterior materials will be an improvement compared to the existing legally nonconforming structures. Eight, the Institute of Transportation Engineers common trip generation rate is one additional peak hour trip. Number nine is is sort of a. An odd one, but I'll just read it anyway. Under 3.3 for boundary of district, section D, the zoning board. May by special permit extend the residential. A boundary 200 feet into RB if it's outside the water resources district. Which would result in existing area of 826 feet in the front setback reduced by. 311 to 515 proposed area in the setback, though. The project is within the water resources district by approximately 400 feet. So if it was outside of the water district, you could extend that RA boundary. And it would be even less. Not nonconforming. And that the proposed front setback under 10 is of 15 feet is farther away from the property line, the existing front setback with an average. Building front distance of approximately 20 feet. And that the area in the 50 foot setback has been reduced by 244 square feet from 1187 to 943 square feet. The proposed area in the setback has been shifted away from the property line as indicated below. 284 square feet has been removed from the zero to 10 foot. From the property line, 332 square feet has been removed from the area 10 feet to 20 feet from the property line. 300 square feet has been added to the 20 to 30. From the property line and 68 square feet has been added to the 30 to 40. From the property line and then finally 12, the building elevation area. Facing the street. Of proposed structures compared to existing structures has been reduced by 67. Square feet from 887 square feet to 820 square feet.
What do you, what are you defining as an existing structure there height wise?
Well, I did do a diagram, so the garage is the garage, the foundation is what's left of the foundation. And the boat structure is the is the side facing the the property. All of those are what faces the front property line. And certainly the elevation of the existing old barn structure is there's not much square footage there. But it's still a reduction, what's proposed is still a reduction on what faces the front property line.
Members, please. Dave, are you going to unmute or are you? Dave, you're muted.
He's looking for his spacebar.
Yeah, you just hit the spacebar, Dave. Something I discovered tonight. It's like a miracle.
Spacebar doesn't work for me. I tried.
Alright, doesn't always work. I probably, I got too many papers and trying to shuffle around in my hands here. The Clark, your existing garage. What's the little bump in the front?
There's a little bump out in the front of that. So it's, I'm just showing on my plan a footprint. Yeah. I understand that, but what is the little bump up?
Is it an actual piece of the building or?
I didn't see it when I went by.
Yeah, I didn't see.
It is on the on the on the plant submission, if you want to take a look at that on the on the. On the first, I'm sorry, the 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 second sheet, there are two photographs of those existing structures. So you can see the the one on the left that's labeled number four on ZBA one. Is shows that bump out section of that existing two car garage.
Yeah, I see it shows it on the plan. I'm looking for it.
The second sheet, you you're looking at the the first, the the second sheet with the aerial photography just above that. Is there's a couple of.
What, in what package is that?
The big, the big full size sheets that you just had open. The second sheet, the one, the first sheet is the existing survey, so if you look in the second sheet on the upper left corner.
Oh, you're talking about the very large Gavin Arrow thing, David 923.
The there's photographs of those existing structures there. Yeah, you got it.
Okay. Alright, now I see the bump up. So. You see if I follow your logic here. Your eight, seven B. Existing nonconforming structure that you are. Altering is what? The garage, the barn foundation, boathouse, or what?
All of the above. I'm replacing all the existing structures and buildings with a new proposed building.
Okay, but you you can't do that out of thin air. I mean.
I don't understand.
You have to be. If you're going to to put in an entirely new structure. It has to be tied to an existing structure. Does that existing structure doesn't have to stay there, but. In order to get your. The benefit of a seven B. You have to be keying off of an existing structure. In other words, you can't have buildings scattered all over the lot and build a build another building in the middle of those. Unless you're building on the footprint of something else, at least part of the footprint.
I I don't see anything in the zoning bylaws that that says that specifically.
Well, it does talk about structural alteration or enlargement of a nonconforming building. Clearly, that's not what's going on here.
I mean, it is certainly possible with several existing. Nonconforming buildings to replace them with several existing nonconforming buildings, for example.
Yes, but there have been.
And then a garage structure.
There have been court cases, Clark, that deal with the fact that you can't transfer. A nonconforming, a nonconformity from one structure or building, whatever we want to call it, to a to a very separate one. It doesn't travel that way.
I I was just gonna say that, I I mean, in the materials that you sent around, you know, the other day. I, I was just gonna say that, I, I mean, in the materials that you sent around, uh, you know, the other day, Woody. There's this uh reference to Angus V Miller Wareham CBA and. Again, based on your kind of synopsis, it says a non-conforming structure's exemptions and protections. Cannot be transferred to an entirely different non-conforming structure. And construction of new non-conforming buildings cannot be permitted via special permits, a variance is required. And, 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 and the situation, again, I'm, I'm just going off of what you, you helpfully circulate. Situation, a pre-existing non-conforming building was voluntarily raised, replaced with a somewhat different structure. And court found that the ZBA cannot authorize creation of new non-conformities via special permits. Whenever a pre-existing non-conforming building is voluntarily raised, a variance is required because this goes beyond reconstruction. To the creation of new non-conformities. So a- again, I'm, I'm far from a, 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 a zoning lawyer, I'm, I'm a baby.
Getting there, you're getting there.
Yep, but, but, but I, I, you know, that, that, that kind of, at least in this fact pattern. That, that seems kind of troubling to me and, and Clark, I, I wanna make it clear that, you know, uh. All other things being equal, I think, you know, the, 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 the. The, the advantages of replacing two tumble-down structures with a brand-new, you know, a, a, a. Smart building that has solar and all of that good stuff, I mean. You know, that, that seems to me to be a positive overall good, I, I, I just don't know whether you can thread the needle.
I'm not familiar with the Angus versus uh Wareham uh case.
Nor am I, but Woody, Woody sent us around a little kind of cheat sheet with a bunch of cases and that was one of them.
Is it recent or?
No, it goes back quite a ways. But it's, it's, it stood the test of time. I gather, cuz it doesn't seem to have been. Much modified or overturned.
The, the um Comstock and Bilalta cases, which are in the last couple of years, seemed to build off of Dedrick and uh Gale. Uh, to a, a greater extent, um, uh, providing uh greater protections. Existing non-conforming structures.
Well, why don't you tell us about Comstock?
Well, well, I'm not, I'm not prepared to talk about the uh case law in, in great detail. Uh, as a part of this, um, a part of today, if, uh, if, if you want. And you continue the hearing, I can uh prepare a um. A breakdown of it, there, there, I did submit some legal opinions um that cover that. Uh, case along with Bilalta. Uh, but if you want a summary on how they apply to what I'm proposing, I, I didn't prepare that.
Well, I think one of the things Comstock. Concluded uh is that um. Generally speaking, pre-existing non-conforming structures lose their section six. Protections when structural changes are made to them unless. They are single or two-family houses, which gets special protections. And even then, as long as the changes don't uh intensify, but don't create new non-conformities. But um. Comstock is, is not, is not sweeping all this under, under the, the umbrella of uh one and two-family houses. It's making a distinction.
I think Comstock also. Was. There was kind of an anomaly in the, in the bylaw that. That got them around that requirement. I mean, I, I understand what, what. I, I mean. I think you're cobbling together different sections of the zoning bylaw. That don't necessarily cobble together to reach the result that you want to reach. I mean, here's what I'm, my concern is. If someone comes in next week and says, I have this lot, it's really kind of a. Hard one to build on, so I need to build in the setbacks. I wanna put a new house on there. Right now, I have a garden shed on there that's in setback. So, since my garden shed is in setback, I have a legally pre-existing non-conforming building on the lot. So I can build a house there in the setbacks. And I just, I don't see that as something that our zoning bylaw contemplates.
Well, you know, if, if it's silent on it, it doesn't necessarily. I, I mean, it's certainly the zoning bylaw doesn't, doesn't um anticipate. Uh, every uh circumstance that, that um. Uh, is out there in terms of um. Replacement or alterations of existing structures.
That's correct.
And, and when the bylaw tends to be silent, you tend to, uh, in such cases as this, you go the variance route. Unless the bylaw allows certain more, more liberalizing provisions, but if it's silent.
I, I think it really. I think it comes down to whether the, whether what's proposed is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or not, I think. It's a simple um call on the uh, um, a subjective uh, uh judgment on, on the.
Well, I think, I think you're right about that, Clark. I think that if it's a special permit situation, that's exactly the test that we apply. The problem that I'm having is that I don't think this is a special permit situation. I think that under our bylaw, this is a variance, and under the case law, it's a variance situation. I mean, looking at it from a special permit test, I don't really have a problem with the project at all. But I, I'm not convinced that the special permit test is the one that we should be looking at here.
Well, the, the structures themselves are, they're not minor structures, it's not a garden shed, a fence, um, um, uh, a, a ten by ten. Uh, planting shed, it's, it's not.
That doesn't matter.
These are, these are large structures and they're, they've, they've all been there for a long time and they're, they're legally non-conforming.
And they're not residential structures.
They, they aren't houses, but um. I, I think under, under the, the, that first, except that they. That you need to have a public hearing for a, a substantially different purpose or. The same purpose in a substantially different manner that that.
I get, I get that too, that's a, that's, that's a, a different issue, that's changing the use.
I mean, rel- relatively speaking, from a, from a, from a, a, a two-car garage and a, and a boathouse, um. Uh, uh, I'm not proposing to put, put a, a, a gas station here, I'm not proposing to. Something just because there's a garage, I'm not gonna put another garage that um for the maintenance and, and repair of cars, that's. That the, I think that zoning covers different uses like, like um, like, like that as an example. Um, in, in a more serious, um, and zoning, but in a more serious way in, in terms of uses.
Yeah, I, I get that and I don't. I don't. See any problem with the change of use, even assuming it is a change of use. But it doesn't convert the existing buildings into a residential building that you can then. Build a new residence on, in the setback.
I, I don't understand why not, because it's a, an allowed use, it's not substantially different in use. Uh, according to the bylaw definition of that term. Uh, and um, you know, it's, it's in the residential B district, it's adjacent to the residential A district and. It, it, it's not a particularly small lot, nor, uh, it, it, and it, the, the set, other setbacks. Uh, and um, areas exceed what's required by zoning by uh multiple factors.
Now, well, tell, tell me, if, if we are convinced by your position, then what? Where is the difference of, for the person who comes in next and says, I wanna build a non-conforming house on a lot? Because I have a shed that's in the setback on that lot.
I, I mean, I don't have an answer for you for uh what might happen in the future, but every, every decision that the zoning board makes stands on its own. You don't make precedent, each, each hearing is an individual hearing that uh you decide on the, on the merits of what's presented. I agree with you. Well, you let Brewer replace his boathouse with a house, so why can't I replace my um. Uh, flagpole with a house.
That.
I don't think they're the same type of uh scale uh, uh issues, but I don't think they're related at all.
I'm not sure it's a matter of scale, I think it's more a matter of legal definition and interpretation. I don't think it's a subjective thing, I think it's an objective thing. And I'm not sure how I feel about it yet.
Carolyn, do you have any points to do yet, or you wanna just sit back and listen, which?
I, I thought I'd wait, I, I'd offer some thoughts when the board members were done, but just.
Okay.
Let anybody else has any other questions or not, but you let me know when you're ready.
Alright, Lee, Matt, Mike has talked a bit, Charlie.
I would, Charlie Higgins is speaking, am I muted?
No, no, you're fine, I can hear you.
Oh, good, uh. Uh, I emphasize the, what is the second word, may, so. Uh, we may grant a special permit, we don't have to, uh, uh, but we, we cannot do it when. Uh, it's detrimental to the area, but otherwise, we have the uh, the board's discretion. And in this case, we would then have to take into consider all of the uh. Uh, uh, do the zoning bylaw really mean that if you had a flagpole in one corner? You could uh build anywhere uh or, or not, I uh, we have yet to make that decision.
I would suggest if it were that easy, it would have been done a dozen times here up to now. Anyway, Matt, Lee. Lee, you're muted, so I can't, you can't.
Uh, I'm holding down my spacebar, so you have to hold it down when you talk.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes, you don't, you can't switch that off, but I can hold it down and talk. This may not be relevant, but uh, Mr. Brewer, when did you put up the? The framework and tarp for your boathouse?
It, it was, it was when I moved in about twenty-five years ago.
Although that's a different tarp, cuz it looks relatively new, but uh.
Well, the plastic, the plastic has to be replaced every couple of years.
Okay, and um, was. Was the garage there when you bought the property?
It was.
It was, um, okay.
So I think it's about, I think it's about eighty years old.
Looks like the garage was there when Rip Van Winkle bought the property.
Um, okay, I mean. Yeah, okay, that, that was really my.
The boathouse is unpermitted, you would agree. It was never uh done with a building permit.
There was no building permit, I did ask um the building inspector at the time uh if I needed a permit for it and. He said no, and I think I asked, are you sure?
I mean, you, you created that, the. The, the space that you're now asking to um include in. Our considerations.
That's right.
It wasn't a pre-existing before you bought the property, so, okay. That was my only question.
Matt?
No, I don't have any questions for Clark, I, I think. You know, I did review all your submissions and, and I do. You know, I, I know we're not kind of deliberating, but I do wrestle with kind of connecting the dots of. You know, replacing these two structures with um a residential. Dwelling, but something that I guess we would discuss um.
Yeah.
As a board if it progressed to that point. For the same reasons, you know, like of forecasting, you know. Uh, to me, it sounds a bit creative, and I think um. You know, if we got creative proposals in front of us in the future, uh, to some of the other board members' points, um. I would wrestle with um. You know, that, you know, hey, this, this was allowed here, um, and it was a, it's, it started out as. As a boathouse, um, and was transformed into a residential dwelling, um. It doesn't. Doesn't seem to um jive with me, but. I'm open to uh continuing to hear what. What other people have to say, but that's kind of my initial take on this.
And maybe Carolyn, it would be appropriate, I, I don't know, Jen or him, are there people in the audience, but maybe we, let's let Carolyn go first.
I'll have Carolyn go, I, I don't know if there's anyone who is just to speak on this.
There she is. Oh, no, you're still muted, Carolyn. There you go.
Okay, how about now, good?
Yeah.
Okay, um. So, so a few thoughts, and I kind of just wanna go through different provisions of forty-eight section six. Because there's, there's been a lot that's been said on, on both sides for this, um. The first thing that I think we were talking about a little bit more at the first sec- part of the hearing was what they call the second accept clause. Under chapter forty-eight section six, which provides special protection. To any kind of an alteration or structural change to a single or a two-family residential structure. And even uh Comstock and the Bjorkland cases that Mr. Brewer um refers to in his narrative. Um, deals with that second accept clause. But all of these cases deal with when we are talking about there is an existing single-family or two-family structure on the lot. Not a suggestion as we have here, which is we're going to take a barn, garage, possibly even a boathouse. And somehow or other turn that into a single family, so I don't think we are talking about that second accept clause. Um, under chapter forty-eight section six, and I even note for those who pulled out the Comstock uh decision. You know, that had to do with a non-conforming garage, uh, being able to be replaced with another non-conforming garage. Well, that's a different provision under forty-eight section six that does allow pre-existing non-conforming structures. To be expanded or altered, has nothing to do with the provision that. Affords special protection for single-family or two-family houses. And footnote thirteen of the Comstock case, the court specifically said. We don't reach the question of whether the legislature intended that the extensive statutory protection afforded to one and two-family residences. Also applies to buildings that serve as accessory structures to such residences, and we do note, um. The only case that they are aware of that touches on this is then the Bjorkland versus Norwell case. But really, in Bjorkland uh versus Norwell, what the court was getting at were. Again, you had an existing non-conforming single-family house proposed to be demolished and replaced, and the court was talking about, look. There are alterations that can be made to a single-family residence such as a shed, a one-car garage or a one-car garage. Expanded to a two-car garage. My point is in all this, I don't think Comstock, Bjorkland, or any of those cases help you here. Because we don't have an existing single-family house on uh the property. So uh, the, the second accept clause of forty-eight section six doesn't get us there. Similarly, I just also wanna talk about um the Angus versus Miller case. Angus versus Miller dealt with a commercial property, you know, a motel or a lodging house that was gonna be demolished or replaced with a motel. Commercial properties do not get the same protection that resident, single-family and two-family. that resident, s- single-family and two-family residential uses or structures get under forty-eight section six. So any kind of alteration that creates a new nonconformity of a commercial structure absolutely requires a variance. And that's uh, that's what Angus versus Miller was driving at. Um. So I, I do want to just get to, but you know, there's the second sentence of forty-eight section six that talks about pre-existing nonconforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, um, provided there's a finding from the Permit Granting Authority, which is you, the ZBA, that it's not substantially more detrimental. And included in that um, that alteration is that it would also permit for um, under your bylaw, alteration includes reconstruction. Uh, so it's a little bit broader than just adding something on. It is, it would also apply to a demolition of structures and replacing it or rebuilding with something else. Uh, so your bylaw would recognize an alteration as including uh raising the existing barn and garage and replacing it with some other structure. I think what we come to here, though, is this change of use aspect where we're going from what are arguably um accessory residential uses, but they aren't accessory to anything on this lot because there is no other use being made. They are, if anything, they are the principal uses of the lot. Um, and they're looking to be replaced with a different use. Now, that then goes to um, the definition uh that Mr. Brewer had alerted, alluded to of substantially different use. And that the bylaw does talk about or defines a substantially different use as any use that is not permitted either by right or by special permit in the district in which the lot is located. We don't dispute the single-family use is a use allowed in this residential district. And I don't think any of us, certainly we could not take issue if Mr. Brewer were actually proposing to build a conforming, single-family house on this lot. We certainly wouldn't even be here right now. Um, the issue really becomes whether or not he can change this, this garage and this boat structure to a residential structure. And then I think there's a further question of, if the answer to that question is yes, can he also make that single-family structure nonconforming or more not, more nonconforming than the existing structures might be? I think this is where section eight point seven B of your bylaw is a little bit more generous than chapter forty-eight section six in that it does talk about extensions of nonconforming uses of a building or structural alteration or enlargement of a nonconforming building. And um structural alteration, you know, would include the change in the location of the building um, from the barn garage to a house. As I cobble all of this together, I think, I think Mr. McMorris used the right word there that we're cobbling a whole bunch of different provisions of forty-eight in the zoning bylaw to try and get to where we need to be. As I cobble all of there, I do think that the zoning board of appeals could, under section eight point seven B, could allow a change from these, from the barn and, and boat structure to the single-family use uh as, you know, an alteration, provided you make the required findings, that it's not substantially more detrimental, it's not injurious to the public health or hazardous. But I don't think that that allows the further request that's being made here of not just replacing these nonconforming structures with a single-family house, but replacing these nonconforming structures with a new nonconforming structure. I think that requires a variance. Um, and when we look at some of these cases, like Comstock and Bjorkland, that talk about what can be done by a special permit finding by the ZBA versus a variance, we have to be mindful of the fact that the court doesn't want to allow someone to do something by special permit just because it's a nonconforming use, when a conforming use would require a variance to do the same thing. So in other words here, again, I go back to, I think, I think a single-family conforming house could be built on this lot. I think if the single-family house is not going to conform to the dimensional requirements, the setbacks, I think that requires a variance here rather than a special permit.
Okay.
And now I have sucked all the air out of the room, apparently.
No, 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 no. I think it, it, you're reflecting a lot of the discussion that went on.
Hi, it's, it's a lot to digest.
That, that feels right to me.
Yeah.
Would you, would you like me to see if there's anyone in the audience?
Yeah, please do.
So if there's anyone in the audience wishes to speak, please raise your hand or speak in the Q and A. Okay, so there's uh no one that wishes to speak.
Okay. That's the board. Is there um purpose in, in continuing the hearing or uh far, for a submission of other information or, or are we at a decision point where we would continue for a draft decision to be discussed?
My, I just have a, a off-topic question, I guess. Clark, is it, is there any way that you can design a conforming structure for this lot?
I don't, I don't believe so. I, I probably went through a hundred different footprint um i- iterations with the geometry of what's required for a septic system and uh the, the wetlands in the, in the back. Uh, and I, I just could not come up with something that I thought was, was reasonable. And, and in fact, um, taking the jurisdiction of, of the um wi- without the existing structures, taking the jurisdiction of uh fifty-foot setback from the wetlands and then a fifty-foot setback from the, from the property line, there's a, there's a wedge um of space that's about ten feet wide.
Is this your only lot on that side of the road?
It is.
Okay, for the questions, the applicant, is there other information that would prove instructive, or are we at a point where we could continue this for a draft decision? No, no decision's been discussed or made, so might even propose if we go that route, that if there are contrary points of view that we have draft A and draft B, it's been done before.
Yeah, I mean, I guess based on what's presented, I can't think of anything that we would um you know, need to request from the applicant to provide to us um.
Dave McMorris?
It seems to me that we have everything that would be useful. I think, Clark, that the material that you put together is I, I think very comprehensive and very helpful.
Hey, Mike, Dickey, anything?
Uh, no, I, I think uh, I'm, I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, I think we know the facts of the case. We just have to make decisions, which is part of the decision-making process. I do disagree a little bit. I think our, our decisions are not star-decises finally, but they certainly in effect uh have, have an effect uh on fu- future decisions. So we definitely have to consider the two together.
Lee, how about you?
No, I don't have any other comment.
Okay, Jen, you've got your hand up.
I just wanted to say um, you know, we'll continue and then it'll still be open for additional information. And just to throw it out there, I don't know if Mr. Brewer plans on considering filing for a variance or making the case for a test for variance. If that's happens, just, just know that we'd have to re-advertise. We'd have to, um, because it's a higher standard of relief. So.
Understood.
I just want to put that out there.
Okay. Um, I think I've, we've heard from all board members. So I would make a motion to um continue this hearing until January fourth, uh, at which time there'll be one, quite possibly, uh, an alternative, but at least one draft decision for full deliberation. Dave?
Yeah, just, I just had one other thought. This is a private way, right?
It is.
Yeah.
And you on both sides?
I do.
In that, in that section? It's possible for you to move the way over fifteen feet toward your side?
It, it might be possible to move the, move the property lines. Um, I don't know what uh effect that would have on um uh, on the status of the, the, the two lots um at this point, but it, it, it certainly is possible that the property line could be moved and the easement would just cross over the property line in a different spot. Because the easement, it's a, it's a land court um easement, so it'd have to go to land court. Um, it, it, you know, it's adjudicated access uh for, from, from the traveled way. The traveled way can be wherever it wants to be, and the property line could, could presumably move um w- whether the traveled way uh is over the property line or not. I don't think, I don't think matters.
Carolyn, is there, is there any, any landmine here uh in terms of that possibility?
Well, one thought that comes to mind uh when mentioning, it's one thing to say, can we move private way? And you know, that's going to involve a land court process that could be quite lengthy. Um, but if we then alter the lot lines, y- you are changing and creating new lots, um. I don't know wh- what impact that would ultimately have on the two lots, because at least the lot that we're focusing on right now in fifteen Dolan Lane is a legally conforming lot in terms of lot size. Um, but obviously, uh, we wouldn't want to see a situation where changing the lot lines somehow or other now creates a, an undersized lot or takes away frontage.
Yeah.
Right, or creates new nonconformity, right?
On either side of the road.
Well, well, both lots exceed the minimum for their uh um zone substantially. Uh, and the frontage also exceeds the requirement substantially. But, oh, hey, good night, guys. We'll see, I'll see you in the morning, okay?
Really cute. A nice touch, Clark.
Uh, I know, uh, but my, my understanding is that when, once you, uh, once you change a, a, a land court um lot, the protective provisions of, of them predating zoning disappear. Uh, so I don't know what the impact is. Carolyn may um uh just be uh warning that that may cause other problems that we don't know about yet.
Right.
Well, I'm just thinking if you, if you if you still had conforming lots and you met all the setbacks, then you'd be fine. You would need us.
I still need you in other ways, guys. But the town needs you. Um, but um, uh, that would um eliminate the need to apply for a variance. Uh, I mean, the, the, the fact that it's a narrow way confounds the, the front setback issue, and it's, it's not like this is um a, a subdivision where you have house, house, house facing each other and uh the, the fifty-foot setback actually makes sense where the roadway is narrow if you have houses facing each other. In this case, uh, the houses are a hundred feet apart.
Yeah, I mean, of course, in this case, Dolan Lane isn't built out yet to the extent that some would like to see it, so I don't know. I mean, you'd have, there's a lot to anticipate and I, I, beyond my feeble capabilities.
It still has land court um provided access via the trial, traveled way, which um, that, that wouldn't change.
Okay, well, that's beyond my my expertise. So I, I'll make a motion that we continue the hearing until January fourth.
Charlie Higgins.
Yeah, that's the second. So Woody Chitikai?
Michael Dickey, aye.
Hey, McMorris, aye.
Lee Daris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Charlie, we need an aye. Charlie? Oh, yeah, just give an aye.
I, I thought if you seconded, that was sort of.
Oh, well, I don't know. Again, all these are outside of my.
I, I want to thank the board for their consideration and time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
We put a lot of work into this. And it was not a slam dunk, so I mean, to your credit, it's. Okay, so that's, that's continued. We have one last hearing tonight. Jen, you want to post us on nine Diablo lane?
Certainly. So as the board received, there was um an appeal filed of the building inspector's lack of issuance of a building permit for a single-family home in nine Diablo lane. Um, they've, they filed that back in November first. In reviewing the application, the application did not appear complete to me, um, and so which I drafted with John Howland a letter to the applicant uh outlining a bunch of items that um that would hold us from releasing it and also would help the board because the application itself did not seem complete. Um, and they submitted that additional information and that was in your packet. Then, because the um applicant's attorney wanted to speak with John Howland, who was out last week, uh, they have since requested an um, an extension um to next month so that they could continue to talk to John and um then come before the board next month on January fourth. And so we received an official letter to that fact today. Um, I've counted out the days. We're still well within the hundred days. Um, but I will still request a letter from them protecting the um statutory deadline.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request to continue until January fourth, the hearing at uh nine Diablo lane.
I'll second it.
Okay, moving seconded. Woody Chitikai?
Charlie Higgins, aye.
Hey, McMorris, aye.
Lee Daris, aye.
Okay, we have two, two drafts, one of which is the, is the two thirty-seven hall. Does somebody want to volunteer for that?
I will.
Okay, Lee will volunteer. I'll volunteer, and I, not that I'm, I'm really thrilled about this, but I'll volunteer to do a draft, but I would like Carolyn with your approval to, to um get your um wisdom which we, we needed here and, and if somebody, I don't know exactly where I'm going to go in this, but um are we allowed to circulate a draft decision in advance?
Yes.
If we don't deliberate?
Right, just don't deliberate. So if it is sent out, say with your packets, um, that's fine.
Well, I'm wondering about doing a draft decision somewhat earlier so that if there are um, if there's either a contrary point of view, you know, after a night you know, after a night or two asleep or, or just some shift right or left.
You could distribute it, you could distribute it earlier if you think that folks need a little bit longer to mull this one through. The only thing is just when you send it out, just say, you know, this is for discussion at our January fourth meeting and don't anyone reply or start saying, gee.
Could they go through you?
Decision.
I, I hate to put you on the spot, but if somebody had a had a substantive issue, could they communicate through you and not?
They could communicate, they could communicate directly with me, we just can't copy the rest of the board, Matt, communication.
Okay.
So they'd have to wait until the January fourth meeting to let the rest of you know, like what some of the concerns were.
Okay, well, of course, the hearing is continued, we have, we don't even have a draft decision and we don't necessarily have to have a final vote next, next January if there's more, more to be done, I'm just thinking that.
Right, like you could continue it right on in January rather than close it, then if there was, if there was discussion.
No compulsion here, this isn't an appeal or a variance, you know, issue, so if we need more time to consider material or, or alternative points of view, I think we should take it, but I'm just thinking, I don't want this to be a, a solo effort.
That's fine, what if you, if you want to circulate it and then have any substantive changes that anyone may have prior to the next meeting, if you want to have them come directly to me, that's fine.
If, if you don't mind the burden, because I think it would be useful, then we could take a look at and, and listen to the people that might have a maybe not an entirely different decision, but nuance here and there. I think we make a more productive discussion. Okay, so I, I'm just proposing that we don't need a vote, but I will do a famous cobbled together version.
It really is.
Okay, and, and minutes, we had October minutes you submitted?
They were, no, I think, I don't think we, I submitted any minutes, that was no, that you're thinking of. Maybe it was something else then. I, I have actually started them, I just didn't finish with licenses. But you will have them well in advance of your next meeting, so you have them for the drafts, because they were already kind of framed out, so.
All right. Any other board business? I, I Diablo is certainly going to be interesting and I don't know what else is coming down the pipe, but I really do believe that dealing with some more complicated issues than we might have in the last year or so. Bless you.
Bless you.
Next week we have town meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, Monday, the thirteenth, in person.
We have the you know, one thing that came up, actually, just to be very brief, that I'm kind of really pretty much unaware of, of the baseball field lights. Apparently that's going before town meeting. And I don't know what the, are they looking for some zoning relief? I mean, zoning does deal with height, I think, does it not?
I'm, I'm honest. Go ahead, Carolyn, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, go ahead, Jen, you might know more than me.
I honestly, I don't know what's on the warrant about it, to be honest, I think it might be a study.
No, it's not, it's.
Era the war. Or go ahead, Dan.
Go ahead, Matt.
I was gonna say, my, my interpretation of it was that on the warrant is for the town to accept the donation of the lights and that the lights would conform with zoning at thirty-five feet.
It just, it just says conform with zoning, which would also include spillage and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and I think it did say thirty-five feet, but it didn't say anything about you know.
Because there's, there's, isn't there a seventy foot exemption somewhere in here?
Yeah, but that's for that, it's in the highway business district.
It's in the footnotes of the area regs.
So these would be the, some thirty-five feet, I, I just am unaware of it, I, I don't.
It's, it's note number eighteen, it's the last footnote in the last page of the
bylaws. In the highway business district, eight being okay, light poles seventy feet. But of course, this is not in that district.
Right, if you're in, if you're in.
Are we in a structural thing of thirty-five or forty feet?
I believe it's thirty-five.
Yeah.
Thirty-five.
Okay, so that's.
Because we had to get the exemption for the soccer field up at the top of, of three A.
Okay. I'm just interested that they didn't come to us, not that we have any say, as long as it complies, we don't have any say over it.
So they had a bunch of, I'm sorry, they had a bunch of meetings with people who are in favor of having the lights and people who are, you know, it was they've been pushing it for a while just because it's something that the softball people really want, which is, I have no opinion either way, but John Howland did attend all of those, many of those meetings to make sure they realize that there would be there'd be some provisions that would have to be followed.
Light spillage and all that stuff, which he would administer or, you know.
Right.
Okay. I didn't know if they were going for some sort of exemption or variance or something.
I think their other item was for like a ten year lease so that the select board would be the, the lease or of the right, you know, I, I don't know if that changes any.
It's town owned land, so it probably has to be.
Yeah. But that was, that was a second item on the warrant that was kind of, one item was I, I read was just to accept the donation of the lights and the second was to approve like a ten year lease so that the select board was technically leasing the land.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, I guess that whatever the softball, baseball boosters will be, will have the lease, they'll be administering this town fields if that passes. Right, you know, the, the question that I have is I thought the whole issue with the soccer field up on three A was that they couldn't meet the spillage requirements without having a seventy foot tower. So I'm just curious as to how they're going to meet the spillage requirements with a thirty-five foot tower.
And these are, my understanding is in the, in the center and lower field, not the top.
Yeah, which, which means that even a thirty-five foot tower is going to bring it up to street level probably, because there's sunken fields there.
Just a kind of aside, Carolyn, do you know if this has been, has this been vetted by the select board? I mean, have they thought about the design elements and?
I, I don't think it has progressed that far, I mean, just my, my involvement with it has been that obviously the CYBSA wants to fundraise and wants to be able to put lights on the fields. But there's a bigger issue of the fact that the town has been allowing CYBSA to use these fields without any kind of formal agreement over the years. And the board of selectmen, you know, want to follow the right process, which would be to put out an RFP to lease the property. Now, it's not a foregone conclusion, excuse me, that you lease to CYBSA. But there are ways to kind of tailor your solicitation of bids so that it does go to some sort of local organization and who else is going to want to use baseball fields by baseball or softball organizations. But it would formalize the agreement between the town and CYBSA if they're the successful bidder. Because one of the bigger issues is that CYBSA could fundraise and they could make a donation to the town of lights and the select board could accept that gift and the select board could go ahead and, and require that the lights be installed. But then there's no guarantee without the lease, there's no guarantee that CYBSA then gets the return on their investment, if you will, you know, if, if the town were to suddenly say, thank you very much for the lights, but we're going to let Situit Pop Warner use the fields, for example. You know, that obviously is not a situation CYBSA wants to be in, so they kind of go in tandem to legitimize the, the relationship that would then give a level of comfort that if the select board then goes forward with the light project, we know that CYBSA has, at least for ten years, the right to use those fields. Everything I've heard when I've been asked anything relative to zoning, I've been told that at least as far as the height, the thirty-five foot height limit, that the plan is to comply with that. You know, I haven't heard anything about spillage or anything else and it may very well become something that is, is, is still to be determined and somebody's going to have to do some kind of photometric plan. I think we're just, it's just too premature for that.
Okay, so it's, it's not being ruled out, it's just, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Correct.
Okay.
And then, of course, you know, there's, it's still town owned land. It's a community facility or recreation facility, which would be a use allowed, but I haven't heard anything about any ways in which they will not comply with zoning.
Good, good, and I, I would just, for all of us as citizens, you know, we have some relatively, relatively minor zoning definitional improvements, all of which comply with case law, state law and, and of course the ledge removal bylaw enhancement as well. And so if you're with groups, talk it up, I mean, I don't know what the, the reason not to comply with emerging state law after fifty years of you know, an antiquated definition, but I would hope that these pass, I think it'll make John Howland's job a lot easier, frankly, the planning board's job a bit easier and clearer. But I don't know if there's opposition to those or if this is going to be viewed as housekeeping. Fingers crossed.
I understand there will be some opposite opposition. I myself question whether the we need to make this change now when we're about to revise the whole zoning bylaw next year anyway, so and it does affect over fifty percent of the streets in the town.
Well, I'm not sure, but anyway. It's, what's, what's affecting if, 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 to take your, your thesis, it's, it's already been determined either in chapter eighty-one or sections eighty-one L of forty-one or case law, I mean, it's not like any of this is new. It's been around in most towns bylaws, Charlie, for ten, twenty years. But if we don't, if we don't pass it, it doesn't make the state law go away. It just, it just makes for more ambiguity, I think. But we'll see. Anyway. That's what makes the world go round. Okay, anything else, guys? Thank you. We'll see everybody.
Happy holiday, happy holidays, everyone. I'll be talking to all of you, so.
Yeah, no, it's town meeting live, it's not virtual.
It's live.
Live, okay, so I hope to see everybody's there. Right? Lee's gonna be there. All right, all right. We'll see you, everybody, see you all next week, but if not, Jen's sentiment is, is, is the right one, have a happy holiday.
All right, I would just need a motion to adjourn, Woody.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second it.
Okay, all in favor, Woody Chitikai?
Higginson, aye.
Hey, McMorris.
Lee Darcey.
Mike Dickey, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, six zip.
Have a great day, guys.
Thank you, Carolyn, very much.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Night, everyone.
Night.